Now we're good, now the meeting is right.
So it's still five ten and I'm gonna call the meeting to order right now.
Yes, in the form.
We, we do, and I'm, I think I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking at today. So we wanted to welcome our new member, Alicia Moody, so I'm assuming she has finally sworn in. Faith, do you know for a fact that she was sworn in?
I have got no response from her, no.
Okay.
I know she was out with a concussion, so.
Right, right, and I know that she, so she's not here today, uh, but for the record, we welcome her. Um, I don't, I didn't hear anything about her not being here today. But we'll, we'll figure that out. So Ta- Tasha, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, thanks, cuz I can't see you. Awesome, there you are. Um, okay, so public session, so we don't, we don't have any, anybody here from the public, um, but is this, is this a good opportunity for me to mention the, um, no, not really, we probably should mention that in, um, under our regular meeting or old, old business. Yep, it is, it's under old business, sorry. So there's nobody here for public session, so we can just move through that piece and go on to the regular meeting. Um, we need to approve the revised meeting agenda for today. Um, did everybody see the, I'm looking at it right now, sorry, that's why I keep looking off to the side. Um, did everybody see the, um, the meeting agenda for today? There's a revised version?
Yes.
Awesome. Um, so has everyone had an opportunity to, to take a look at? Does anyone have any concerns or questions or corrections? Sounds like a nope. Um, can somebody make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for today?
Agenda.
Oh, oh, meeting agenda, sorry.
You want to approve it?
Okay, thank you, Tony. Any second?
I second it.
Alrighty, a call for a vote? Since there's no, no discussion, um.
Hi.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
I ca- I can't see the other folks, so I don't know if they're.
I'm abstaining, I wasn't there.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Henry?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't there.
Okay, so, so.
The last meeting, I thought you said February, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. So, uh, so moved, because everyone who did vote, it's all voted that yes, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I don't think I've ever had this many abstentions. I don't know what to do. So, so one thing that.
It still carries because you got, you still have some yay, so. The other one's just not voting, that's all.
Okay, sounds good, sounds good. So, so next on the regular meeting agenda is approval of the February sixteenth meeting minutes?
That's the one, so.
Okay, so, so how you, so what are you saying about that one, Tasha?
Yes, I approved it.
You approved it, okay, okay, awesome. So Tasha makes a, a, a mo- a motion to approve?
Yes.
The February meeting minutes? Does anybody second that?
I second it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Henry. Uh, any discussion? Anybody have any questions or conversation about that?
Think we can remember back to February.
I know, it was a long time ago. I have no idea what happened then, but, um, so you know what, so seeing no more concerns or questions, we're gonna move on, um, so, so moved, um.
You didn't carry the vote?
Uh, oh, oh, call for a vote, sorry, call for a vote?
Hi.
Hi.
I know, okay, so here's the deal, I got my notes over here, but then I got my other notes over here. So the notes over here are the ones that tell me what to do, the notes over here were telling me what's going on, so I, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place. Okay, so moving on, review April, oh, we got a lot to approve, remove, review the April twentieth informal meeting minutes. Oh, there's no approval required, so moving on. Um, also March sixteenth, there's no approval required for that informal, so we've had quite a few informal meetings. Uh, we had a May eighteenth informal meeting minutes with, that requires no approval. Um, so any, if there's no questions, I'm just gonna move right on to old business and our discussion about the revision of working, the working definition of the antisemitism, um, for the resolution that will go to the common council. Now, hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to read through the revision, so we were, um, we were concerned that it was a, it was a lengthy document, and, um, uh, Tony had given us some, some guidance to to condense it and to consider it or reconsider it to, for, uh, submitting to the council for, um, a resolution. And so as of right now, I'm looking at it, we got it down to, looks like two, two pa- two pages, right? Two and a half?
No, I think this is the same original.
Is this the same one?
Yes, and I think, uh, we're gonna, actually, since it's gonna come from you guys, Casey and I were already at it, I said, no, we can't do that. The ca- I said, the commission needs to do that, I said, needs to be their work, not us. I said, so put it back out there, and then I said that this'll be a working meeting, they can chop it up, cond- condense it, and Tony, you know, you know more so what the resolutions generally look like and how they should be presented to the council. And then I would pretty much say that you could have somewhere in there before your therefore be it, we, whatever, is that uh, it wa- it's worded so that it refers to the more reference, it references the more lengthier document. So I would say, look at this and what you think is applicable to present before our common council in regards to putting a res- resolution, uh, before the common council to endorse for the city of Middletown.
And, um.
And I don't wanna make that decision, so that needs to be, that's why I said, eh, this, this is a working assignment for you guys. So you could start looking at it and, and start dissecting it and on what you wanna keep and not keep because the original document is gonna stay in its true form.
Right.
It's just, it's, it's, yeah, it's just printed smaller A, but that's why it looks, looks like it's less pages. Sorry, Tony, go ahead.
Linda Reed's really good at doing that, like, like condensing it but keeping it like true to its form, just for what we read. So, I don't know, might be something maybe we should help us out with before we go to the floor.
Okay.
She's good at it.
Okay, so you're recommending that, uh, this, this, um, let the resolution be deferred to the city's common council, Linda Reed, to, uh, recommend to look at a revision, to condense it to, uh, uh, resolution that's feasible.
Form. Yeah.
That's a good idea, I, I didn't even think of that, but that's a good idea.
She does it so, she does it so much.
Tell me about that, guys. I don't, I don't know Linda, and I don't know that she'd be okay with that, so can you tell me about why we, I think that's a good idea?
She, she's the council clerk, so she writes up all our resolutions. That's what she does, that's basically her job. And she's just, you know, because she does it so often, she's really good at it, so that when it, when it goes to the floor, it's, it's read basically in a, in a manner that is in resolution form and it's condensed and proper, proper, you know, all that stuff, so it's all legit, but, you know, she'd be able to keep it true to its form, but in a resolution form that is proper to read and, you know, condensed, basically, with everything that we need in it.
Thank you. Tony, thanks for the, for the suggestion, because honestly, I wouldn't even feel comfortable taking this apart because I've never written a resolution, and this is so important that I don't wanna take something out that, um, might change the intent. Um, so I appreciate that.
Right, cuz when we have a resolution and I, and I write it to her, then she condenses what I have to say, to the proper form, with, with having all my info in it, so she's, that's what she does, so. She helps us out, cuz even the resolutions that we do, we need help on it too.
Okay, um, so do we need to make a, um, do we need to vote for, on this?
Yes.
Would you mind making a motion, um, to submit this to? Um, Marie?
I think Faith said it very eloquently, so I will, um, make a motion to put it in the, in the way that Faith just mentioned it, to.
Motion to defer to the, uh, council clerk for, um, proper resolution format for the city. For, for, for the, right, for the commission.
Yeah, they call it.
For the commission.
Content.
What'd you, what'd you call it?
Make sure that the, the form and the content of it are correct, basically.
Okay, so defer to common council clerk. Uh, for.
Resolution form and content.
There you go, for resolution, I like that. Form and co- and contact. Very good, very good.
So who, who's actually going to do that?
I can do that as the staff person.
Okay.
It lays on, I can actually do that to Linda, give her an overview, um, uh, overview of what you're doing, show her the piece for where the mayor signed with all the mayors from the United States and, uh, what Myra and Jay are doing, and then here's a resolution that the Human Relations Commission would like to present to the mayor for consideration, uh, cuz he's gotta review it first for consideration uh, to, um, submit to the common council clerk for them to endorse this as a ru- resolution for the city of Middletown, so that will be in, uh, following suit along with a number of other towns that are, have already done this.
Great, okay, thank you, I'm sorry. So we started, we started a discussion before our second, so I apologize for that, guys, I asked a question.
Yeah, well, who seconded it? I don't, I only recall who seconded.
We didn't get one yet.
We got the motion from Tony.
Howard just seconded.
Okay, so Howard seconded, now you can open discussion the whole nine yards, yeah, before the vote, yeah.
Okay, anybody, um, have any, anything to discuss in regards to this, any questions?
Howard? The question?
You have the floor, Howard.
I moved the question to vote.
Oh, oh, no, you don't want no discussion, okay, you're done, thanks, Howard. That's what, that's what move the question means, no discussion, and move on to the vote. There you go, man.
I've actually never had anybody say that before, thanks, Howard, I just learned something.
Yeah, I've been, I've been to so many conference meetings, yes.
Okay, awesome.
Meetings along.
Well, I'm not gonna argue that, so, so, uh, call to vote?
Hi.
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 Okay, vote carries.
Vote unanimously carries, that's when you say when you have a hundred percent.
All right.
For the record, that sounds like, ooh, that's powerful vote when it's unanimous.
That is, yep, you're right, thank you.
Alrighty, this is good. Get copied for Linda for a minute. Henry?
So, we ready to move on?
I think so.
Under, I don't, I see you're writing, Faith, I don't wanna, I don't wanna distract you.
I'm good, thank you.
You're good, okay. So in other old business, um, we had during our last, uh, meeting, we had a discussion, um, about cor- some correspondence from a parent who was concerned about, um, about behaviors, um, at the high school, about fighting and about other unruly type behaviors, um, and so I was given the task to contact, um, school officials to find out, like, you know, what's happening in terms of the climate, um, and I, I got a whole bunch of information and data from Dawn Brooks, Dr. Dawn Brooks. Um, and I, 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 I'm pretty sure you guys received that in your packet also, right? It's just the, it just says notes from five nineteen twenty twenty-two discussion with Ava Hart and Dr. Dawn Brooks of the Middletown Public Schools. Okay, so, so here's, if you guys don't mind, because I don't expect you to have access to all, like I said, I know I got papers over here, I got a two different tablets that I'm using right now, so how about I just read it to you? That way you don't have to fool around looking for it, is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, I'm just gonna read my notes. So according to Dr. Uh, Brooks, condition, oh, and my print is really small, so no wonder you guys probably couldn't see it, cuz I can barely see it. Um, conditions have improved since school opening, uh, in terms of the frequency of physical altercations between students. Some of the challenges that the students had initially were attributed to them being isolated for such a long period of time during the quarantine, and some students struggled to meet the expectations related to boundaries during the transition back to school. Dr. Brooks went on to say that it is disheartening that negative behaviors seem to find their way to the internet despite the number of positive initiatives and good work that's done by the students and staff. She also related that the Middletown Public Schools are aligned with the national average in regards to absenteeism, physical altercations, vaping, substance use, uh, mental health challenges, and teacher absences. Uh, the Middletown Public Schools are one of twelve school districts in Connecticut that are currently partnering with the Connecticut Rise Network. Um, the Connecticut Rise Network is a community of educators working together to help Connecticut students achieve success in and beyond high school. They all collaborate weekly to review and discuss best practices as they navigate the new landscape created by COVID nineteen. Dr. Brook- Brooks proudly shared that everything that is done at MHS is data-driven. Um, there may be a few areas of vulnerability in this regard. However, MHS has historically been highlighted by Connecticut Rise as a district with innovative ideas, and the Middletown Public School is often a point of reference for the other districts in Connecticut. Um, so, so that was the, that was the extent of, um, of my conversation with Dr. Brooks. Um, she was, of course, she was very gracious with her time, um, in terms of meeting with me to, to discuss our concerns, um, and, and I, and I kinda second her concerns about, it's really disheartening that when something awful happens, it's on the internet and people are up in arms, but I, I happen to know that there's a lot of good, um, good people and good work and great students that, um, within our school systems, and it, and it stinks that we, um, we only become involved when there's a perceived problem. So, that's just my opinion.
Now, we're talking about the high school, am I correct?
Say that again, Henry?
We're talking about the high school, am I correct?
We, we are, so remember, with somebody, I think we, somebody mentioned concerns about Woodrow, um, oh, and so to answer that question, Henry, cuz I think somebody said something about what's going on at Woodrow also. So I asked Dr. Brooks about that, and she says, she kinda joked, but seriously said, well, we got the same kids. Um, we got the, the, the older kids at MHS, so it's just the younger kids at, um, at Woodrow, or excuse me, at Beeman, and so basically, we're, they're dealing with similar issues because their kids are dealing with the same transitions, right? They're having the same, I mean, they were all stuck in the house together, they're all dealing with transitioning back to school. Um, and so the data is very similar, and so she doesn't, oh, hi, Deb, and so Dr. Brooks, um, doesn't believe that, um, that there's any, like, that Beeman is, um, an outlier in terms of the discipline, or rates of discipline, uh, disciplinary actions for students and or absenteeism, uh, for students and teachers, so basically.
There's a huge difference then, because I got a grandson there, and four of his six teachers haven't been there all year. They're being taught by a bunch of substitutes.
Is that Beeman?
Yes, Beeman. Okay, so I know differently, I was just at Beeman today, hey, um, about behaviorals between students and my grandson happened to be involved, um, and I was at a track meet with Tony. Prior to Tony getting there, there was young men throwing glass down at teachers and so I'm seeing different things, I'm going up there regularly, just, just talk, talk, or, and I was going on. I think there's great differences, cuz we're even thinking about a charter school now. So I don't know what she's seeing, I know what I'm seeing, what I'm hearing, um, and I stay around the school because he's new to the area.
So, so, thank you, Henry, and, and so I just wanna reiterate that Dr. Brooks didn't say there weren't challenges, she said that the challenges that, um, that they're having at the high school and at Beeman are consistent with the national average and statewide average, so there are problems. And, and so, and I think I, during our last meeting, I, I reminded you all that I, I work with kids and adults, and I see lots of kids from all, all districts. And they're all struggling, there's fights and all this stuff going on everywhere, um, so, and, I, I mean, you, Henry, the last thing you said, oh, you said something about a cha- a charter school, I don't know anything about that, um, and so I don't know if you, if that's something, you wanna say more about that?
Well, I have a granddaughter, or at Capital Prep, now, it's not the same Capital Prep as in the past.
I know. I know.
But it's still a, but it's still a good school, um, you know, we, and my wife would prefer to send him to Xavier, and I consider that a bad investment, but, uh, I'm just looking outside because of not only what I'm seeing at Beeman, or what I'm hearing about Middletown High. Tony, he has a son that goes there, I see him every day, great kid, and, but we also come in contact with the resource officers there, and they're saying that they're having many problems up there. You know, so, you know, there's a difference between somebody from the administration who's not there versus somebody who's on the floor. So, when I'm talking to people on the floor, I'm not getting that type of report back. And when I'm at Beeman, every time my grandfather, my grandson walks in the, in, in the house, he's had a substitute for science, a substitute for math for approximately four months. Uh, a substitute for, uh, his social studies, language arts. Um, and there, it's not like one or two days, it's chunks of time at a time. So at one point, I was like, the substitutes are teaching our kids. And then when the kids come back, when the teachers come back, it takes them getting used to. Um, one of my concerns, like this morning, uh, I had to go talk to, uh, assistant principal. We walked outside to have a conversation, and we're talking about behaviors of kids, now I don't know if a kid did it or not, but with everything going on, there was a door propped open with a magic marker which is a security issue, especially with everything going on today. Um, luckily, it was found by a staff member, cuz I was standing by the staff member when they found it. But these are things that are concerning to me as a, a grandparent and a parent, and would be concerning to anyone else. And we can't blame that on the teachers, we gotta talk about our kids. You know, and especially with what happened down in Texas, you know, nothing should be propped open or, or concealed. Um, you know, and, and those are just minor concerns, but I, my main concern are having teachers there on a daily basis who teach the core courses. And that's not happening.
Shortest of teachers.
It's the same teachers, they come back, but they come back like, we just got, I believe the math teacher just joined about last month sometime. Now, granted, I believe she was on, uh, leave of absence due to, uh, a birth of a child, but there were several other teachers, you know, COVID, they're not coming in, whatever it may been.
Yeah.
But we've had large dealing, we have dealings with a lot of substitutes, lots of substitutes, and long-term substituting.
I don't, I don't know how many, how many, um, full-time teachers and paraprofessionals, um, we have at Beeman. But what I can, I think I can safely say is that four, um, inconsistent teachers out of, I don't know how many there are, but I'm assuming there's more than, I don't know, more than forty teachers. I, that's a, that honestly, I mean, that's a low percentage of, when you look at, when you look at the fact that this is not just a Middletown issue, it's, it's happening. If, if you were to go on indeed and look at every single school district right now, they're struggling for people, for adults. Um, so I, I, and, and so these are not excuses, this is explanation, like, you're right, it's not acceptable, but that's, that's where we are, and and so I saw in the paper today that our, the new superintendent was just appointed. So maybe, maybe these are concerns that we need to raise with that person.
Also would help with the kid's stability, especially with behavior, because they would know what to accept. If I have a teacher for a month and a half that's allowed me to do whatever I wanna do versus a teacher that comes in with structure, there's gonna be a lot of bumping heads.
Yeah.
Until we can get that situation under control. So, you know, that takes, that plays, I'm gonna say a major role in it because one of the, one of the meetings today was about, uh, uh, what happened to be a shouting match between my grandson and another kid. And it was a shouting match, but I'm not gonna mention any names, but these individuals that were involved, they knew about the behaviors of other individuals well beforehand. But when you get kids involved, instead of one kid having a shouting match, now you got ten. You know, and, you know, I got called, and I'm gonna jump right into mine, you know, jump right, you know, cuz we don't raise them like that. But it isn't just the teachers, it's the community, that's, if you've been involved and your kids are involved, you gotta be there.
Yeah, I agree.
So it's not just the teachers, it's our community, parenting, everything, the structure is no longer there. You know, I, me and Tony's had this conversation, I don't know how many times.
Um, if you don't mind, I, I'd like to add just my perspective on it, because I think I'm, I'm in a very unique perspective. So, um, my wife, my wife has been in education for over twenty-five years, she's a principal in elementary school. Now, I'm retired, I did six years as an SRO, five at the high school. And now for the past, uh, year and a half, I've been working in, in education as well as a climate specialist, which is basically behaviors and, you know, the, the social and emotional climate of the building. It all comes down, and I think the issue really is, uh, we're seeing a huge lack of consequences for actions based off of the connection of it looking negative when consequences or suspensions or whatever you might have. Those rates being high seem to nega- negatively affect school districts, um, being able to get money or support, instead, instead of it being the opposite, where if they're seeing a large number of these issues, that they get more.
Yeah.
So I think, I, so the connection, I think, is, is this, the thinking also politically, which I see so many times things put forward with good intentions that cause negative consequences. For example, the thinking behind it is, well, if we incentivize giving them more money for suspensions, they're gonna start suspending kids more to get more money. So they do the opposite, and they say, well, if you have too many suspensions, we're not gonna give you money. The negative consequence of that is they are letting everything go, they don't hurt themselves financially. Unfortunately, everything comes back to money. So I'm seeing it every day, you'll see fights, you know, and when they do suspend, well, it used to be maybe a three-day suspension, let that kid regroup, give the staff time to get them the proper help before they come back. They're not even being suspended, or if they are, it's one day and they're just back and there's, there's no time. I mean, the amount of work that I see teachers and administrators do, it's insane. I, I know my wife is gone from five in the morning till five or six at night, and when she's home, she's working, so on the computer, that's nuts. They're, they're just inund- they're inundated with everything, and that's another issue that they have to pick and choose their battles and their consequences. And it, it's getting tougher and harder, it's a very tough environment, um, kids are just emboldened by the lack of consequences. You really can't even get them to quiet down in a lunchroom when there's an announcement. If there was a lockdown, safety issue, you won't hear the announcement. You won't even hear gunfire, it's so loud. Their, their staff that wears their earplugs, it's so loud, and they don't listen, lights go off, come to quiet down, they don't care. They, they, they talk to adults like they're their friends, I mean, when I was in school, and, you know, it wasn't that long ago, I mean, didn't talk to adults that way, uh, you, when they said stop, you stopped, even if, you know, even the bad kids were, weren't really that bad considered back then, but I don't know, there's a lot of issues. As far as the fights and stuff, my kids tell me there's fights all the time, they see it, they, they get videos from other friends that fight, show them to me. It's something I saw all the time when I was at the high school, so, uh, happening at the middle school too. Teacher friends of mine, cuz I'm, I have very close friends in, in the district, they're burnt out, they're tired, it's sad. That, it, it's a very rewarding and giving job, but there's only so much, basically, I hate to use this word, but abuse you can take. You know, and, and it gives, it burns, it's a big burnout rate, especially, and it, the past two years, it was tough before, but now it's just gotten pretty bad. Definitely COVID has done. Definitely COVID has done major damage. Meriden, Meriden never closed, Middletown did, which may, might have caused more damage, Meriden never did. So with Meriden, it, it was pretty bad, but it seemed to be a little bit better that, that the kids were there. Sometimes kids, all they have is disability, is going to school. So it, it's tough to have them home in unstable environment. Consequences aren't necessarily a bad thing. Kids, I think sometimes want the consequences to know that you really care.
Exactly.
You don't do anything, when you don't do anything, what are they thinking? He don't care.
He don't care.
Do whatever, I'll, I'll do whatever I want. My kid, they get consequences, even if it's me just yelling at them, showing how upset I am, showing them that what they did upset me. They gotta know that I care, I love them, I don't want to see them, bad things happen to them. So, you know, this kid, listen, there was, most of the kids this year that, that I had in my, in my school, that I was one-on-one with them in five oh four breaks and all that kind of stuff, when they were bad, I, I was straight up with them honest. And, you know, I had a, give a consequence or, or have a serious conversation with them and I was tough on them. They were all like giving me hugs, saying they were gonna miss me. That, that's because they know you really care. So we gotta find that middle ground back again, so. See what happens, but it is, it is a tough, I do worry about the safety and security as well. Um, you know, last council meeting, they had a resolution about banning guns, and I'm like, okay. You could ban every gun in the world, we're still gonna need legitimate security in the building. When are we gonna do legitimate things that really secure our buildings? You know, we don't have like a security, a legitimate security director, we don't have a legitimate security force. I mean, you have SROs, but not a lot of them. It's important. You know, I always look back to if I hadn't done what I did and have the experience that I had, then maybe I wouldn't think I need them either. I like to think everything's great, but when you're exposed to a reality is that most people aren't, see things in a different light. So I guess the only thing I could do is try to have those, those tough conversations with people and explain to them, you know, why we need to do certain things. The hard conversation to have because who wants to have, you know, worries and anxiety about your kids being in school, thinking bad things could happen, but I mean, that's just life. You gotta have those tough conversations, so. Anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Tony. And you, I agree, you do have a unique perspective. Um, in terms of like, you, you've done the work in so many different ways, you, you know, your, your wife as an educator, and the work that you're doing now is so, is so valuable. Um, I, I, I preach and pray for climate specialists i- in all our schools. But the reality, right, the SRBI, SRBI, like you are doing the work where you guys are looking at the data, looking at challenges in certain areas. But not everybody's doing that with fidelity. That was a conversation that Dr. Brooks and I had because, because everybody's in transition. Those are the things that have been falling by the wayside. Like, you know, they have those meetings where you're looking at the data and trying to figure out who's doing what, where. And I suspect that that's happening like in lots of places because of time, right? Resources, so it's hard to get all the right people, all the climate people, school social worker, um, the teacher, it's hard to get everybody in the same space at the same time looking at this data. To go back to Henry's point, because there's a shortage of adults.
Yeah, and, and that, and that's causing another issue of everybody really being pulled in different directions and can't really focus on their main specialty. They're being used in a million different things. I, I'm one of them. They, they took away the assistant principal at my school, and I'm acting almost as the principal's assistant on top of it. So it, it's really, it's really been mingled into a big mess, and everybody's just trying to do their best, and it's too bad. It, it's just, uh, I mean, what are you gonna do? I mean, I, I don't know what to even say. Security issues aren't, aren't, aren't done the right way. The jobs aren't, have to be manipulated to get the most use out of different things, but someone might be short. It, it's pretty bad. It, it's, it's, it's kind of scary in some aspects. Even security things don't get pushed the right way. They're not doing security stuff, I know, the way I did all, and that, that's concerning to me. They're worried about other things, but it, it is a concern. Like I said, I got three in the district and I did all that after Sandy Hook. What, what do we need? I mean, something happened in Texas, it happened here. Did we forget about what happened here in elementary school? So, I mean, it's a little, it's a little frustrating. I just don't know when, uh, you know, God forbid. I don't know. Anyway, I'm not, I don't want to.
Do they have security outside the building, someone walking the perimeter?
Not that I know of, no.
What was your question? Henry?
Do they have secu- security walking around the perimeter of the building?
What building?
I don't know.
Any building, you know, Middletown High, because they've had issues up there before, or Beeman.
We do at the high school.
They do at the high school?
Yes, we have.
You have like six security guards there, right? So I mean, yeah, I mean, whatever their posts are, people should always be aware. I, I took walks outside the building every now and then, just to check things. Security was always around, we only had three back then, so I think now they have six, I, I think.
Yes. I'm sorry, Henry. So I was just gonna say, so we can have this conversation all day, but the reality is, there's even controversy around having SROs in the building. Some parents are not okay with that. Um, and some parents don't want metal detectors, a lot of parents don't want, because, and so, and to go back to what Tony mentioned about funds being tied to the suspension rate, he's absolutely right. Like, school systems don't get money when they suspend kids and, and at a high rate. And, and that's tied to, um, the fact that black and brown kids were being expelled and suspended more than others. And so in an effort to equalize the system, the system said, well, we're gonna hit you in your pockets. If you don't put things in place that will ensure some sort of equality, we're gonna take your money or not give you the money that, you know, that you need. And so, but here's the other thing, this is all connected, guys, because then when we think about Henry, what Henry said, but, but there's a lack of teachers because they're not available, because COVID or whatever, mental illness, whatever. And so, you know, I mentioned before, and that goes back to, um, that, that goes back to the fact that, if we don't have the teachers, if people aren't present, like Tony said, then that means we're pulling folks from other places to do jobs. And so it's a domino effect, right? We don't get the money, we don't get the resources. So when we don't get the resources, now, you know, we're, we're struggling to, to, um, basically, work to fit meaning not only for us, but for a lot of districts. And so to go back to, to what Tony said about funding being tied to suspension rate, maybe, maybe that's something that should be further investigated on a, on a, a higher level, a statewide level, and, and should that be reexamined? Um, and sure, so as a person of color, I certainly don't want to see us go backwards and start uh, expelling and suspending, uh, people of color at a higher rate than, than others. Um, but the reality is, there ought to be consequences for certain behaviors, but we still have to make sure that it is equitable. And so I don't have the answers, but I'm sure there are other smarter people that have access that do have the answers. And so I wonder if this is a bigger conversation for somebody like our new superintendent of schools.
I think so. I think, I think that concern, it does need to be on the table. I have, uh, my great nephew and niece, this is their first year at Beeman, both of them, and I haven't had an opportunity to speak with them since I heard that there are issues going on. But I am going to make it a point, uh, to stop by their house and sit down and have a conversation with them because they're new, and they are, they're, they know better to get in trouble, what have you, but I want to see if they might be being picked on or targeted because they are very quiet, they're very good students. Um, you know, Jacob, uh, has done a great job of moving his grades up, he's in As and Bs, and his sister's straight As, so I want to see. Sit down now that I'm hearing all of this, to get a better bird's eye view, uh, on what's going on so that I'll have a better insight too. Um, as the president of NAACP, because certainly we, we really do need to sit down uh, with, um, I think the chair of the commission, myself as the president of NAACP, and some other people, and address with the new superintendent. And say we want to address this issue and we want to see how we can help you.
I think that's a great idea. Um, I just want to say one more thing and then I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be done with this conversation unless it goes in a different direction because we're not gonna solve this problem today. Um, but I agree with you, Tony, the teachers are burnt out, the parents are burnt, burnt out. But I do want to remind you all that one of the number one predictors of students, or for student success in school is parent involvement. I'm putting everything on the parents, but that's a number one predictor for student success. And so, kudos to you, Henry, kudos to you, Faith. Like, we just have to be involved as parents in order to make sure that things are going right for our students.
One, one of the things I brought up this morning with the assistant principal was that we need more parents' involvement. And we all need to be sitting down, talking about this. It shouldn't fall on the teachers. Shouldn't fall on the principal. It starts at home. When you leave home, you're an extension of me. So when you get in school and you decide to act up, I gotta bring you back in line. Teachers aren't gonna be able to do it. It's the parents in this family, the extended family in the community that brings them back.
Takes a village to, so the village, the village needs to come to the table now to say, how can we help you because we understand there are some issues? So that's why I think listening to the students, I think there needs to be a session for the students once we, you know, we gotta come there with some suggestions when we go to the superintendent. You know, we're, we're willing to run some sessions, whatever, gather some feedback with your new diversity, um, uh, direct and equity director, I, I, I'm recommending maybe some after, you know, four o'clock or five, five PM after school, family discussions. First we do the students, then we do the parents uh, with, uh, information we gathered from the students that the parents need to hear, because parents need to hear this. You all gotta help too, and we're here from the community to try to address this. So I think this is, I think this is a great project that, uh, we could certainly move forward on, um, uh, soon.
So, um, Faith, should we, should somebody make a motion to, um, it sounds like we want to have a conversation with somebody at the.
Yeah, we want to start with the new superintendent of schools. So I mean, I'm sure he's overwhelmed, I mean, he's been, you know, on board now, uh, I think a year, really, a good solid year, a little over a solid year. Um, working in, uh, through all the other muddles and stuff, what have you. But, uh, we want to meet with him as a community to let him know, uh, we're here to, um, to help him. And here are some of the things that have been brought to our attention, and this is a great concern to us, is the fighting in the schools. I'm sure he'll be happy that somebody even said, I'm glad somebody's coming here to help me try to figure out how to, how to, uh, work through this process. And I'm sure he'll have, um, Dr. Jada Wade, um, involved in that meeting and some of his core staff. And then, you know, we can go from there, but I think a, a meeting, you know, uh, is a good start, and then you can build from there.
So anybody able to make a, a motion? Um, I'm, I'll just try to sum it up, um, a motion, um, a motion for the H, HRC to contact the new superintendent of school, um, to have a discussion about, um, behavioral challenges in the district?
Oh, I like that. Oh, I like that so much, behavioral challenges. Of course, then that's what we'll bring up, the fighting, behavioral challenges, so, so nicely put, Madam Chair. So can somebody move that lovely motion that was just put on the floor?
I, I, I motion, I motion.
And who's second?
I second.
Okay, and Tasha, so now you're good to go.
Uh, so, um, a discussion, any more discussion?
No.
Okay, so let's call for a vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Here we go, Tasha, Henry. I heard a voice, who was that?
Sanji.
Awesome.
Oh, Sanji's on board too. Debbie and Sanji, welcome aboard, ladies, wonderful.
Yes, I apologize to the chat, and then I did something that now I can't see anything. Um, I had a graduation, so I apologize to everyone for being late.
That's okay, we, we all got crazy schedules and there's a lot going on. But you made it, you made it, so that's the most important thing, awesome. All right, so you actually had full house, uh, Madam Chair, except for.
I didn't hear from Tony.
Was that?
I didn't hear your vote.
Aye, aye.
Oh, thank you.
Is that another unanimous vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Unanimous, so, um, okay, wait, how do I say this again? So the motion properly carries at a unanimous vote.
There you go, awesome.
Okay. Um, and I guess, uh, I'll probably be responsible for doing that, communicating, so I will take on that task.
Okay, the chair will actually contact the superintendent to set up a date for that, right?
Yep, we'll do.
Uh, are you gonna, you're gonna, are you gonna make it like, most likely it'll probably be late in the afternoon for him because he's busy, but, uh, will there be some chair, chair people, or how are you gonna handle that?
Uh, in terms of like inviting him to have a discussion?
Yeah, some of your commissioners, are you gonna?
Yeah, my hope, my hope is that he would have a discussion with us all.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so that, hear from your commission, that's what I'm talking about.
Right, right, so I know that our, it looks like we gotta have a discussion about our next meeting, there's some sort of conflict, so we can't, we probably won't be doing it then, right?
Yeah, because I gotta be at the, the national convention, so not unless you want, you can move it up and invite him. You, you're gonna invite him to the meeting, how's that?
Uh, move a, move the meeting up.
Yeah, and then you, you're gonna invite the superintendent, or you, you guys are gonna go visit him, or he gonna come visit you? How are you gonna do that?
See, this is what the discussion part is for, people.
Exactly, so that's what.
Reach out to women of ill, or maybe it might be July or August or something, who knows when it's gonna be for our next meetings.
Well, your next regular scheduled meeting will be on, at, um, will be in August on the third Wednesday. But in this case here, the third Wednesday, I'm actually not gonna be here. So, um, that's why I'm saying, do you want to move it up, or do you, uh, can, I'm trying to think, the fourth Wednesday, yep, the fourth Wednesday should be, I normally have another meeting on the fourth Wednesday. So, uh, you can move it up to the second Wednesday if you like, if not, you can wait to August.
Sorry, sorry. Um, are you, are you referring to July thirteenth?
If that's, uh, yeah, if that's, that's what you want to do. Um, the thing is, I guess it's on the table because there is a conflict with your regular meeting date. Do you want to move it up? You want to move it down? And do you want to invite the, uh, the new superintendent to your meeting and greet him and the whole nine yards and tell him what your concerns are? How do you want to handle that?
I think it's a tight window right now because I believe he's gonna be going in and starting probably the end of July to get ready for the year.
Howard's got his hand, yeah, in a minute, Howard.
I, I make a motion that we move the, uh, July meeting from the twentieth to the thirteenth. Is that acceptable for you, Faith? You're here.
I'm here that week, yes.
And we invite the superintendent of schools to meet with us and why don't we ask him if we could meet at the Board of Education building?
Oh, oh, Henry, in his conference room, okay. Well, we'll see if his, we'll see if his availability, how's that?
Or give him the date of the twenty-seventh of July, you know, give him two dates.
Okay.
Sorry, I can't really hear you all. I don't know if there's something wrong with my sound, but.
Yeah, it's hard to hear. Uh, I, I make a motion that we either, we invite the superintendent of schools to a date that's convenient for him, either July thirteenth or the twenty-seventh, and that if it would be more convenient for the commissioners to meet at the Board of Education building, which I've never been at, so it would be a
I like that, Howard.
That would be convenient for him.
Yeah, but you're giving, that's a two-week period that most people are gonna be on vacation.
Well, we have to see at this point.
I get that, I get that. Why don't we just see what dates he's open?
Well, we can, we, we can do the two dates and then say, or whatever date is best for you. Except for the third week in, uh, July. Or, or a week or a time, a date that's more conducive to you, a Wednesday that is more conducive to you.
Do we need to meet on a Wednesday? Could it be a date that's? Do we need to meet on a Wednesday? Could it be a date that's convenient for him?
It will be whatever date he's convenient then, I guess. How's that? I mean. We went from one extreme to the other, but that's what the discussion does to you.
Right, that's fine, because we're actually ahead of the game, cuz we have to have this discussion anyway, so that's fine. But, Faith, our next, our next meeting, can you guys hear me?
So I'm listening to two people one time, but that's okay.
So our next meeting would have been on July twentieth?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so Faith, even though you won't be here and we're gonna possibly move our meeting, I think that would give us more opportunity, more options for him. We could, we could offer July thirteenth, July twentieth, or July twenty seventh, cuz technically we would be meeting anyway. So I like Howard's idea to possibly set something up and go visit him.
But you can't meet without me, I'm staff. The problem, staff's not gonna be here, that's why we're moving it.
No, but this is not, no, 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 I'm referring to just a conversation with the superintendent. Like, I had the conversation with Dr. Brooks. This would just be a conversation like that. Not, not an official meeting.
Just you?
No, no, not just me.
Well, I would wanna be there too.
They're missing out.
Yes, definitely because I, I would have to be, I'm, 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 I'm wearing two hats. I wanna be there as the N double A C, President of N double A C P. What are you talking about?
Okay, okay.
She also has skin in the game with family members at Beeman.
Exactly.
Okay.
Can I amend that? I would ask the.
Oh, gosh, now I'm, now I'm really, okay. You amend, okay, go ahead, Howard. Nice and slow, though.
Yes, I would like to amend that to any date in the month of July, excluding July fourth and the twentieth and a weekend, that we extended invitation to meet with the superintendent of schools at a location that's convenient for him and a date that's convenient for him.
So I wanna make sure that, cuz remember, I can't hear you guys that well. So are we meeting this, are we meeting the superintendent at, on his turf, or are we inviting him to one of our meeting? What are we doing?
I would re- recommend that you stay on your Wednesday meeting date because there are all these other things going on that if he picks a day, then it might not, it might prohibit others from attending. So if you stay with your standard Wednesday meeting date, that at least gives some continuity to what you're doing.
So we're offering him the Wednesday, the sixth, the thirteenth, or the twenty seventh of July.
I think you might have to go out much further.
And, and Faith does need to be at these meetings.
I think you may have to go into August because he's getting ready to go to schools.
I, I think August would be really.
Yeah, they're, they're actually preparing, they're doing the teacher's orientation, they're doing a lot of stuff.
Let him see what he says.
Well.
And but what, and, and not only that, you guys don't only meet at five, so five, I think it's a very good time because if you're doing it during the day in the mainstream of stuff, I think that might be a little difficult for him to do. And that we'd be willing to come to your, your, your place of work. Oh, Debbie seconded your amendment. Thank you, somebody seconded.
The meeting at that time. I know it's busy, 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 but he's just as busy as we are. So, you know.
Can you guys hear me?
Ready to go.
Hello?
Can you hear you, Sanji?
It, it's very hard for me to hear. I have to hold the phone up to my ear and I have it on speaker. Um, I don't know what happened, it just like faded out.
It went out.
I might log off and try to log back in, but, um, I know we're all trying to figure out dates and like there's graduations in high school, um, elementary transitions and, um, colleges. So it is really hard right now to try and get schedules together. And, um, we are being very presumptuous with his time. So, and, um, Henry, I, I think you were saying that, you know, he's getting ready for the school year, he's entering a new position. I think we should just write him a nice welcome letter and let him know that we are on board with him. And if he needs any help moving forward, we might be a great ally for him. And that, um, you know, there are some concerns that we also have with the school, but not just like bombard him with our issues because he's probably gonna have a desk full of work on top of the schedules and everybody wants, wants a piece of him right now. So the meeting that I think we're gonna have with him probably won't happen until October.
I think it may happen before then, especially with the concerns of, of children.
Right, I mean, but like realistically, like, we gotta give this guy a little bit of time to
I agree.
unpack a little bit.
I agree.
Well, nine times out of ten, he's not gonna be the one, he's gonna, I assure you, he's gonna delegate that to, uh, his diversity, equity, uh, inclusion, uh, uh, director, uh, Ja- Jada Wade, that he will definitely, because she's already done a climate, um, survey, she's been working on that. And I would like to see that report on how, uh, what is the climate of the school system with the teachers and the students and the whole nine yards. So I know that she was doing that also, the cafeteria is across the board, she was doing that. She had certain specific sectors that she was assigned to do and certain other people were assigned to do. So I'd like to know what that climate, uh, report looks like and what the outcomes because, uh, in that climate report, it should identify a lot of, uh, operational issues. From the teacher's perspectives, from the worker's perspective, um, and Tasha knows what I'm talking about, um, and, and, uh, the principals and whatever, they were different sectors. So there should be climate, a climate report that reflects, uh, feedback on all those particular sectors, even the students. Students were surveyed, so I wanna see that report.
Another way to maybe get in the door with him is to get in the door with her first. You know, I know what we want to get in, in the door with him and get some of his time, but we might have a better chance of getting in with her first.
That's a good idea.
It was just a suggestion.
Because whatever commit, you could send communication to her, you can invite her, and he gets copied on it. So he knows already that somebody's in loop on this, uh, working, uh, you know, gonna meet with the, the city's Human Relations Commission, so.
Right.
I don't know, uh, the discussion is gone, uh, full circle. We have gone from everywhere to everywhere. I do like the idea of the Human Relations Commission sending him a welcome letter and that, uh, you know, we've had some of our own discussions and what have you, and that certainly we are looking to be, what did you, the term you use, Madam Chair? Allies, uh, uh, somebody, what'd you call it? Somebody said the word, what was the word?
I think, I think Sanji just said that we would like.
There it is, I was gonna say, I did, allies, I'll be all right. Allies, and that, uh, you know, we are here to work with you and, you know, um, on certain things. So, uh, I don't know, I could draft out something, I can, or, uh, the chair could draft out something, we could work on drafting out something that, that at least welcomes him to let him know that already he's got, um, you know, um, uh, com- um, uh, commissions and committees already willing to work with him, um, and making sure, ensuring that, you know, uh, the students and everyone has a, a quality experience at the school. And that we would like to possibly, next step is, uh, meet with, uh, your director of diversity, invite her to a meeting.
Right.
Because nine times out of ten, she's gonna be the one doing the work.
Exactly. I mean, not to say it and, and like that, but, you know, we might just have a better chance getting with her.
So I'm, I'm a believer that I don't wanna think for other people, and so I don't know that the superintendent wouldn't want to be the person at this meeting. And I don't know that he would be too busy.
I, I think he would be. I think he would, he would wanna be the person at the meeting. He will bring his, uh, director with him. I'm almost certain he will bring her with, with him, but I think he certainly, if we sent out the invite, trust me. I think he'd, he'd come to the table.
Like, we're trying to figure out his schedule and, like, I, I, you know, he's.
Yeah, we're trying to do that. We're trying to do that. We need to let him tell us, okay? We can invite, we need to let him tell us. So I don't wanna assume anything, you know, we're going around the circles here now, um, doing this and doing that. I think we need to send out the invite and then he can tell us. But I'm almost certain that he's gonna wanna, if somebody, uh, city's Human Relations Commission is reaching out to him to, uh, say that we, we, we wanna be your allies and work with you, we understand there are some things and we wanna, you know, we understand that it takes more than just, uh, you know, teachers and principals, that also the community needs to get engaged in helping to rectify problems and situations in the school system as well.
Exactly.
We wanna, and we wanna strengthen that partnership. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Yes.
So now, where are we at with this amendment and amendment, amendment? Can you just take your, 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 your motion back and then let's start all over?
We had, there's an amendment on the floor, or there's something on the floor.
Right, but nobody voted on it, so if you don't vote on it, I mean, you can vote it up, you can vote it down, and then clear the slate and move on to something, a new fresh one at this point, because it's so, I'm just gonna say right now, so much discussion on, I don't know where we're at. So, um, uh, why don't you just, Madam Chair, call for a vote on the, um, motion that was made in the amendment? And you can vote it up, vote it down, and then we can move on, uh, with a new one.
So could somebody make a motion, um, could somebody make a motion, um, that would permit myself and Faith to, um, put together a letter, a welcome letter, um, to the superintendent of schools that would also discuss, uh, possible meeting and concerns about the climate of our school system?
Well, Madam Chair, we can't, no, Madam Chair, we cannot do that until we close out the amendments that.
The first.
Yes, that's, Howard put a motion out there and then he made amendment to his motion. It was properly seconded by Debbie Rumerman, Rumor, yeah, Rumerman. And then we went into this lovely discussion all over the place. And so now, we need to vote Henry's motion down, you voted up or down? And if it's, it's, it's not, we're looking at doing something else different, it needs to be voted down. And then we move to a new motion, which is the motion you wanna put on the floor.
I've never voted down a motion. I don't know how to do that.
Well, I don't even know what motion I put down, put out.
The, uh, the motion was what Henry put on the floor about the date. And then he made a friendly amendment to add the date of July sixth, thirteenth, and twentieth to invite the superintendent.
That was Howard.
I mean, I mean, I'm sorry, who'd they say?
Howard.
Yes, I said.
Howard made it, I'll get it together. Howard made it, but Debbie typed in the second, um, Henry, if you didn't see it in the chat. Debbie wrote, uh, seconded in the chat.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
And then we went on to this lovely discussion, and then all of a sudden came the welcome letter from Sanji. So, that's why I said park the car because we're all over the place now.
Okay, so we have to get rid of the first motion and then vote on two se, two different motions afterwards.
No, he made amendment to his first one, so, and then it was seconded by De- by Debbie. So we just need to close out this one that he admitted himself.
Okay, so we already had a discussion, so I'm gonna just call for a vote. How about that?
That sounds very good to me.
Call for a vote.
I'm gonna go with nay because I think we, we wanna go to Ava's second, uh, uh, thing that she wants to bring up. So I'm, I'm a nay for now. A little confused today.
I'm a nay also.
Nay.
I can't hear Tony at all. I don't know what he just said.
I hear everybody loud and clear.
Nay.
So, yeah, give me the thumbs up or thumbs down. Good idea, Tony.
Nay.
And I think Debbie also gave us a thumbs down.
This is Sanji, no.
Henry, no.
Wait, are you guys all saying no?
Yes.
Yes, we're saying no. Yes, we're saying no.
Tasha, you gonna say no too?
I said no.
Okay, so there's.
This is a bad idea.
Yeah, okay, Madam Chair, so there's one, yes, and the remaining are nays. One, two, three, four, five.
So the motion.
Motion dies.
Dies, got it.
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't carry, the motion dies. Yeah.
So then what do we do when the motion dies?
Then you can, oh, now you can make a new one.
Oh.
It's not, you voted, you voted ne- one, one yay and the rest nay, and so it died. So now, move on to the, what else you wanna do? I wanna go to the car show.
All right.
I'm watching it on TV.
Oh, thanks a lot, Henry. I can't, I'm watching you guys on my TV.
Madam Chair.
Yes. I'm not the chair, I'm a chair.
I can't hear you guys, sorry, Tony.
You can't? Oh, wow.
No, there's people there we cannot hear.
Can you hear me?
No.
I can hear everybody clearly, yes. Okay, where are we at?
Okay.
What is it that you wanna do?
What, Tony?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let me see if I can just wrap this up real clear for us, cuz I think I, I heard Ava what she wanted to say. So I'll make the motion that the chair, along with, with Faith, just send a letter to Dr. Uh, Ma- uh, Matos and just not only welcome him, but invite him to meet with us at some point in the future. She could reach out to him and also talk to him, have a phone conversation saying, hey, what works with you? And if we can find a date in July or August to meet with him, then we'll do it. We can invite him to our meeting and just keep it that simple. And it, it's open, and if he can't, she can come back and report to us that, hey, he's not available to until this date or that date. Maybe we have a quick special meeting with him if, if necessary. And just keep it real simple and see what happens. And that way, it'll, we can all, you know, keep our options open, and we might have things that come up that we can't make it too, I, I don't know. My wife might be planning a trip I don't even know about right now, so.
Do we get a second?
I second. I can hear a word he said.
Yeah, I don't know what he said, so I'm afraid that everybody else is okay with it.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
I heard it.
I heard it.
Second it.
Yes.
Any discussion? Call to a vote?
Aye.
Abstaining, cuz I could not hear them, hear what he was talking about.
Aye.
I'll repeat it, yeah.
Looks like the vote carries with one abstention.
Okay, if Howard knew what I said, it'd be great.
One abstention, Howard. And the rest, oh, and two, three, four, five, six, six yeas. All right. Real short, Howard, can you hear me?
I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, let me summarize what, huh, what Tony said. Is that the chair and myself, we're gonna send Dr. Matos Vasquez a welcome letter uh, from the Human Relations Commission and to invite him, uh, to meet with the commission at a date that's convenient with him, um, in July, will pretty much indicate when you normally meet on a, on a Wednesday. And hopefully that would be conducive for him. And, uh, we're ju, and then he said he don't, we just wanna keep it real simple. So our letter's gonna be very simple, welcome him, and then inviting him to our meeting. And that's what you voted on.
Okay.
You got it?
I got it, and I abstained, and now I have a question on, on that. You're sa- still staying a, a date in July, correct? Is that what he was saying?
He stayed July and August.
Thank you.
I was saying, so if he says that he can't make it in July, or in July, or any future date that is, you know, he's able to make it. So they can give, he can give us, you know, five dates or two dates, not only, you know, we get some kind of commu- communication back and forth from him to set stuff up in the near future.
Yeah, we're gonna ask him to give us several dates. And then when he gives us the several dates, then we'll report back to the commission. And then hopefully all the commission members are available on that date.
Okay, I, I suggested that, and Faith, you said, said we should keep it on our regular meeting night of a Wednesday.
We'd like to, we'll, we can indicate when we meet, but we're still gonna open, leave the option open to him to give us a couple of dates.
And, oh, Tony also. And, oh, Tony also put in there, a special meeting could be called.
Yeah, a special meeting of the Human Relations Commission can be called, and it would be co- a special meeting if you meet outside of that Wednesday.
Right.
So it's gotta happen anyway.
Twentieth. Exactly.
Right, okay, okay, yes.
That's why, I mean, i- i- the same thing with moving the meeting date, it still would be on a Wednesday.
Okay.
We wanna keep it really open.
Elementary rules, can, can I change my vote?
Yes, you can if you want to, can you make it unanimous so that we can make it a nice, beautiful, uh, one hundred percent unanimous vote on this?
Yes.
I don't know how to go backwards.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, he just wants to change his vote from, from abstain to yea.
To, yeah, yes.
Okay, so now you have a unanimous missed vote, uh, Madam Chair, which he can do that, and wonderful. God, yeehaw!
Great.
Let the record show.
So, the good news is, the good news is, I think we also resolved our, our last, um, discussion topic by having that discussion.
Yes, you did, please.
Right, so we get to move to our resignation of Commissioner Ford, um, which, oh, I don't know, did everybody receive a letter?
What letter?
I see it on Facebook.
Um, he sent, uh, the email, I, I think poor Casey, I'm telling you, we've been really stretched over here. Uh, Casey was supposed to include it in the packet, the email.
Okay, so, so we did receive a-
And I said, I said, no, I think, I said, he sent the email to the chair, so the chair can present, present, I said, his resignation.
Okay, so we, we received correspondence from, um, from Ed Ford, Councilman Ford, that he would be resigning from the, uh, from the HRC, uh, effective immediately. Uh, he, he was, was, has been gracious, uh, with his time for years, so it's been lovely working with him, I'm so appreciative of all of his contributions, um, but Ed made a decision to resign because he's expanding his family, and so he wanted to be able to spend, uh, more time with his, uh, with his wife and, and their future baby. Um, and so, uh, he is trying to streamline his life by, uh, alleviating some of the pressure, and so, and so we had to go.
Yes, and to piggyback on that, if you notice, in the Middletown Press, he is actually resigning from the com- his common council position. It's in today's newspaper.
Oh, I didn't see that, okay.
Yes, council member stepping down to resigning from post to focus on family and divinity school, he's going for his masters.
Oh, nice.
And so, but how this, so, other than missing Ed, because he's wonderful, um, we, that now will result in a, in a vacancy. So we do have a vacancy, and I believe it's, um, it's on the, the Republican side, correct, Faith?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
'Cause, uh, yeah, our last person is on the Democrat side, and so, okay, great lively discussion. Wonderful.
Okay.
Casey will be crazy with that motion, but we'll be all right, we'll straighten it out, don't worry.
Yep, and we'll, and so in terms of our next meeting, you'll, please, just pay attention to your emails. Uh, we'll have to, we'll have that meeting based on the discussion with, uh, the letter sent and the discussion with Dr., uh, Dr. Matos.
Vasquez.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Uh, just a short motion, could the chair write to Councilman Ford that, uh, our, our thanks and good luck and special, best wishes to him from the, the commission?
So, I'm sorry, did you ask me to do more work? It's hard for me to hear, but I think that's what I just heard.
To, uh, Councilman Ford.
How about we just look for a side to him?
I was gonna say, how about if I just pick up a card and the chair, um, say a few words, and they're thanking him on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, how's that?
Some type of way.
So, we're, we're, the suggestion is, uh, send a card. We got it, I'll pick it up and have the chair pop in and, um, and sign it, and put a few words in there on behalf of the commission, okay?
Yep, thank you, Faith.
You are welcome, yep.
So, I think we're at the end, and anybody wanna make a motion to, oh, review our 2022 attendance?
Looks pretty good.
Okay, anybody? Anybody have any questions or comments about 2022 attendance? I, I'd like to thank everyone for, um, making it an effort, uh, to, to be here. Um, I know, I know how busy you all are, and I know how hard it is to make it, especially with, you know, all of our lives. Um, but it, it really was helpful today to have us all here and to be able to move this work forward, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
And as a staff person, I'd like to thank the commissioner, the chair, for doing a great job of leading this team, and for the great work that you're getting ready to do in the community, I really love it. Collaborative partnership, wonderful, that's what it's all about.
All right, so, you want, somebody wanna make a motion?
Thank you.
To wrap it up?
Thank you and your staff and Ava for making sure that I got the packet, and I know it was hard work, and, and thank you very, very much.
No, she noticed you were missing, and she goes, what happened to Howard?
Make sure you give a big thanks to Casey, too.
Thank you.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, I really appreciated it.
Okay, can we get a motion, go bye-bye, I mean, to leave or to adjourn?
Do I make a motion to adjourn?
Have fun at the cruise night.
I think we all made the motion at the same time.
I know.
Somebody seconded?
Second.
End it. Any, any discussion? Nope, so moved.
Good night, everyone.
A motion carries.
Wait, who, who made the motion?
I heard everybody, and then, oh, come on, we can't have everybody for the record, come on, Madam Chair. Sanji, I heard Sanji.
Oh, that sounds good, I think, thank you very much, awesome. Being adjourned at what time, it's, uh, six twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, yes, it's time to leave, okay, have a good evening, stay safe.
Bye, guys, have a great night.
Always be positive, thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you all.
Bye-bye, everyone.
Bye.